Your job today is to keep me awake.
Good morning. Welcome to the Tuesday, June 30th, meeting of the Reno County Commission. I will call the meeting to order. Our first item of business today is our weekly pledge of allegiance to the flag, and then we will follow that by a prayer given by Darrell Peterson of Grace Christian Church. I want to thank Darrell for being here today. So if we rise and do the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear heaven and most gracious father, we thank you for the privilege of being able to come. And father, we just thank you with all the different decisions and the ideas that they have to come up with. Father, we just lift them up and thank you for godly wisdom to help influence the decisions. And father, we just thank you for this county. We thank you, father God, for the leadership. And we thank you, father, it's a blessed leadership. And father, we just thank you for the wisdom and knowledge they have, the natural. But father, we just thank you for supernatural as well. And we thank you, father, this is a blessed day, a blessed meeting. In Jesus' name, amen.
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 Thank you, Darrell.
Thanks, Darrell.
Again, welcome to the meeting today. And as the commission chair comments, we have another group coming from our district attorney's office. I'd like to introduce them, if they'd come to the microphone and tell a little bit about their background, what they do with the district attorney's office. First, we have Valerie Hansen. Valerie, welcome. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. My name's Valerie Hansen. I'm an assistant district attorney. I've been here for about two and a half years now. I've been handling all of the traffic and misdemeanor cases. But with the addition of our newest attorney, I will be kind of moving up and out of that role and taking over more of like the drug possession of drug cases. So that's, I guess, me.
Okay, can you tell us about your background and where you got your law degree?
Sure. I went to Washburn, got my law degree at Washburn in 2011. Was licensed in Nebraska first. Took some time off when I had, I have two little girls, four and six, so I took some time off with them before taking the job here, so.
Great. Well, thank you.
Could I ask just one quick question? So as you get into drug and law enforcement, could you talk a little bit about the majority of the cases you see or the ones that concern you? Or just kind of what activities going on with the drug court? Because we've been talking about that quite a bit with the sheriff's department.
Yeah, and Natasha Esau is actually taking over the drug court role.
And I don't mean drug court as much as I mean arrest, convictions, but the non-drug court people, because they seem to get moved into the correct line.
Right.
That's a good way of saying that.
Yeah. I would say the majority of what we're seeing, the biggest problem we're seeing right now is methamphetamine pretty consistently.
Okay.
And right now, the trend seems to be more of trying to place them on community corrections, get them into drug treatment and dealing with it that way versus imprisonment.
These are nonviolent criminals, of course.
Right, right.
I mean, no weapons charge.
Right. And most of them are usually just a possession of the methamphetamine and like a paraphernalia type charge.
Do you have a sense from the majority of where they come from? I mean, are they being shipped in from Mexico, where it's cheaper to make, I hear? Or is it being homegrown in little vans, like Breaking Bad? Or, I mean, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
What's your sense of that, of where it's coming from?
I don't really have a sense of, because I'm not in the trafficking part of charging those cases out, so I don't deal with a lot of the distribution or anything.
So that gets kicked to a higher level?
Yeah, Natasha, that used to be, Tom handled most of those cases. And he's still doing some of that. But Natasha's starting to take over more of that role. She was doing what I'm transitioning into now, so.
Okay.
But I don't think there's as many like Breaking Bad vans as there used to be. We're not really seeing it made so much anymore here, manufactured, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Valerie, thank you for being here and come and see us at any time.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And now we have Chris Noon. Am I pronouncing that right? Your last name, Chris?
Yes.
Okay, welcome.
So I have just started with the DA's office, June 1st. I'm on a temporary license. Since I just graduated from Washburn this past May, I'm waiting to sit for the bar this September. And as you are sitting for the bar, you can apply for a temporary, what they call a 710 license. So that's what I'm doing. So I'm not yet an actually licensed attorney. I have the law degree and just a temporary license allows me to practice as long as I'm supervised.
Okay. And where are you from originally, Chris?
I'm from Hayesville.
Hayesville?
Mm-hmm.
Close by.
Is that today's case low, you're scared of losing, or?
Yeah, this is the, this is for in a little bit, so.
A little bit?
Yeah, here in a couple minutes, so. It's just in here and it's just easier keeping my hand, it's such a big pile.
I understand. No, I commit you, I impressed you there, commitment to your work. Thank you.
And when do you say your test will be?
It'll be the beginning of September, September 9th and 10th.
You studying hard?
Yeah, unfortunately, that's all I have time to do, work and study.
Do you have family?
I do, yes. They are, I have some family that ranges up in around the Manhattan area in Olzberg, and I have some family that lives down in Wichita and some that live in Sedgwick.
Okay.
Okay. Chris, we're glad you're with the Reno County District Attorney's Office. Hope you stay a long time.
So do I.
Okay. Good luck with your test.
Yes, yes, welcome. Good luck.
Thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
I've enjoyed getting to meet the attorneys that we have from the district attorney's office and...
They're all so young.
Well, well, all that is comparative, Bobby. I want to go there.
They feel young as I talk to them, I'll just say that.
Okay, I don't know that I have any more announcements today. Our health department people aren't here, and I believe our district attorney might be coming at 9:30. So maybe we might move on to public comment of anything not on the agenda. We will have an agenda item of a discussion of the governor's recent actions and what our answer to that is or explanation to that is. And so why don't we put that under discussion and action items? Well, I'd like it to go early so that people in the audience that want to speak to that don't have to stay any longer. So I'd like to put that in right after the consent agenda. Or...
And that's as a discussion item? There's no action items in there? Or there might be?
There might be.
Okay.
But maybe, and I'm struggling here, maybe we should put that right after the discussion that we received by our health director on it. So with your patients, I'd like to change that around. And while we're waiting on them, we'll go on to public comment on any items not on the agenda. Is there anybody in the audience that doesn't, wants to speak to those? I'm assuming you're here to speak to...
So since you have it on the agenda...
There'll be a time to speak, yes. Wasn't, but it is now.
Okay.
Okay. Going on, additions or revisions to the agenda, are there any by the commissioners? County manager, I believe you have an addition or two.
Yes, to add a resolution for the CARES Act money that the Spark Group for the state of Kansas, the 12.6 million being sent to Reno County. We need to adopt a, or the commission needs to adopt a resolution.
Okay, that'll be item 8C.
And then also I ask for a 15-minute, non-elected personnel executive session.
Okay.
That would include Joe O'Sullivan and the county administrator in that.
Okay, is there a motion by the commission to add those two items?
So moved, second.
No discussion, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hirsch.
I didn't hear you, sorry. Yes.
Commissioner Hirsch.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so continuing to wait on our health director, let's go to item seven, the consent agenda. This week in the consent agenda are vouchers for the amount of $291,135.65. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, second.
There's a motion, the second. Is there any discussion? If not, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hirsch.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. We will go on to item, no, we won't. We'll go backwards now.
Did you want to wait for Tom?
Okay.
Please together?
You're correct. We're gonna, Nick, if you and Adam have a few minutes here, we'd like to wait till 9:30 for your discussion, please.
Representative Wagner, probably?
Yeah, public comment?
Yes. What?
Public comments.
We've had to. I think he's here to talk about something that's on the agenda.
Oh, okay. Paul, you've got time, right?
Yeah, I'm...
And you'd probably like your gentleman speak and then react to that?
All right, sorry, I missed that.
That's okay.
Mr. Chairman, we do have Bruce Feigbuegel here. He's our fire training consultant.
Oh, right. Okay, does he want to speak to the commission?
Yes, sir.
Now would be a great time. Please introduce yourself and...
Commissioners, just, Tom made me aware that he expects to be down here by 9:30, just as soon as...
Welcome, welcome to Kansas.
Thank you, and I won't take much of your time. So that's a beautiful area around here, you know? They used to say you're not in Kansas anymore. I can say I'm not in Wisconsin anymore, so. It's a little bit warmer here, but as the old saying goes, it's a dry heat. You know, it's actually true. It's not so intolerable. I talked to my wife last night and she goes, oh, it was like 83 today, here today, but the humidity was just, you know, so. Summers in Wisconsin may not be the best place to have two St. Bernards, but that's where I'm at with that, so. Anyway, I want to thank you for the opportunity to come down here, and I won't take up much of your time at all. I just wanted to give you an impression of what I've seen and since I've...
Would you introduce yourself?
Oh, I am so sorry.
And the company that you're with or what you're doing for the county, for the people listening at home.
Sure. My name is Bruce Furbringer. I'm with Five Bugle Training and Consulting, and I'm a retired fire chief out of Eau Claire, Wisconsin, city of about 60...
Bruce Furbringer?
Furbringer, yeah.
Like F-U-R-B-I-G-E? Card'd be great.
Thank you. It's a long German last name.
I'm sure the chair would like one as well.
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you.
And I...
Commissioner Hurst?
You got one more?
Oh, I got one more.
Okay.
Is there anybody else could I offer? That's kind of usually where I sit, you know? All right, I'm sorry. And we do, we do thank you.
Randy's got a contract, probably, with all that on it.
Yes.
Okay.
We do thank you for sending our fire chief down here from Wisconsin. Chief Beer. Oh, sure, yes, yes, from Fond du Lac.
He was a great steel.
Yeah, yeah.
Wonderful job, so far.
He's a good man. I had a chance to talk with him yesterday, and I knew him back when I was President of State Fire Chiefs Association and back then, Steve was like a deputy chief and that, and he was a, yeah, very valuable member of everything, so, a good guy. So at any rate, I submitted a proposal to come down and do a evaluation of the fire service system in Reno County. And I got down last, arrived here last week and began my interview speaking with Adam and Todd on Thursday. And then for the last four or five days, over the weekend, I've met with all of the fire chiefs of all the districts, met with the South Hutch chief, met with Chief Beer, and had an opportunity to speak with a lot of the chiefs and assistant chiefs on what's happening here. And what I discovered is that Reno County, their fire service delivery is kind of like a patchwork quilt. Every district is a different color, a different shape. They each do things their way, by and large, and they're all sewn together. And somehow the work is done. I mean, it may take longer than it should. You may experience a little, you may experience higher fire loss than you should, but eventually the emergency is mitigated. And you have a bunch of hardworking folks out there, men and women, dedicated to the service delivery, to getting what needs to be done. But you also have a lot of diversity out there. You have districts with different levels of training, equipment, different procedures, a lot of different management expertise, you know? Some are more schooled in the fire management and the skills necessary to prepare a budget, to do a presentation, to organize training, to establish standard operating guidelines, things like that. And you have others who look at the job description that they came up with and said, it ranged from, yeah, I know, we talked about it, but I really, I don't deal with it. I've got other things I need to do, to, I understand everything that's on here and I want to do it, but I don't know how to. Can you help me learn how to do this so I can do a better job? So for the most part, I saw a desire to improve a system. I saw excitement about the opportunity to do that from another. And I'd be lying if I didn't say I ran into a couple that said, we do things our way and just let me alone. And not only that, let me spend my taxpayers' dollars the way I want to spend them. So some are like islands, others are eager to work together. One chief said, it says Reno County Fire Department on my door, but I really don't feel part of the organization. And another, you know, chief said, we work well together. And quite honestly, getting in under the county's umbrella before we were our own city fire department was the best thing that ever happened to us. You know, it's taken us a while, but we're on the road, we're saving money, we're getting the equipment we need. It's a good thing. So it's this quilt, it's this patchwork. I've received lots of good feedback on the current system. I've received some good suggestions on how things might be improved. And as you can imagine, they run from one spectrum to the other. There is a consensus that there is certainly fiscal oversight on the districts, and that's not a bad thing. But what is also needed is a management system to provide a common basis or foundation that supports minimums for all the departments, professional standards, best practices, that isn't there. There are some strong feelings that there's some roadblocks out there that are speed bumps, that are slowing them down with their ability to accomplish that. And some of them are looking to the county for guidance. Someone would like to see the county more in the game, so to speak, other than just the fiscal. You know, they would like to see someone come in and say, this is the way we're going to do it. You know, I've heard a range from, we work really well with districts when they come in. I've heard some say, I don't feel safe going into that other district. We'll send our own person, we'll be our own division within the command structure, we'll do our thing. They're saying, I wish, wish we could feel confident with each other so that it's seamless in terms of working together when the time comes. So I think the foundation for doing that is out there. I think I'll be able to provide a number of recommendations for the commission to choose from, to see how they want to go, if they want to make change at all. I will be very blunt and tell you, though, that the success of any path other than maintaining the status quo is going to rely on the commitment of the commission and county management to say, this is what the county needs, this is good, and we are going to do what we need to do to accomplish it. And if people see that commitment and say, okay, we'll work with you, you know, we may have to compromise, but we'll make, we'll make a system work, we'll be fiscally responsible, we'll make sure you're up to date, we'll put together a capital improvement purchasing plan for the next 10, 20 years, we'll put together a training plan, a strategic plan, or whatever you want to call it. That's great. If they come and say, nope, just leave me alone, then there may be some uncomfortable situations that are going to have to be faced because you can't have an island doing just what they want when the greater good is at stake, especially if they can't come and justify why they need to do the things they do as part of the overall plan. So it's certainly going to be interesting. So what my plan is from here is I have this information, and I'm going to go back and... It was kind of like taking a drink of water from a fire hydrant, you know? You get all that stuff at one time. My plan is to go back, go over my notes, get them organized, put together a report, work with Adam and county administrator to go over the draft and see what they're thinking and come back. My understanding is the county chiefs' meetings are going to be starting up in September again. So I'd like to come back with a draft, and I'd like them to see what's going on. I believe in transparency because they're going to be the players in this. And I'm not afraid to take a hit in criticism. I mean, we've all gotten thicker skin over the years during our management lives and talk about it. But I also don't believe in cowering back and saying, okay, you can just do what you want. I mean, I will challenge them and make them explain to me professionally their position and why we should do that. So I'd like to do that, come back, get their input, work on the draft again, and then come back and present the report to the commission. And then depending on what you all feel, the direction you want to take, that gives me the guidance then to come back and help put together a strategic plan to achieve that mission that you choose to do it. And so I would anticipate, once I get that guidance, I mean, it's hard to believe, but September's only eight weeks away. And once I get that guidance, I can have the final report done shortly thereafter and then begin working on the strategic plan. And my goal would be to have a strategic plan ready for your review and to move forward in 2021. That may sound like an aggressive timeline, but I think we've got people out here in the county that are anxious to get this done. And quite honestly, if, looking, you know, beginning with the end in mind, to me, if there's a system rough together and ready to implement and get going by a year from now, that would be a reasonable timeline to expect people to be participating with their new roles and responsibilities, getting them trained up and understood of what they need to do. And it may go a little quicker or whatever, depending, you know, on how things go, but... And I'm willing to come and do whatever I need to do. I mean, I have a day's drive.
Bruce, let me ask this.
Please.
You say you experienced a significant amount of diversity between the different districts and so forth. I'm assuming that this, in your past experience of consulting with other county or municipal departments, that this is not an unusual situation that you're finding?
It's not unheard of, but it isn't common.
Really?
I mean, I'll be honest, back in my home county, we have volunteer department, and it's called Township Incorporated. And it incorporates a half a dozen townships in a mutually agreed-upon contract with one fire chief for, you know, half a dozen or more townships. And each station is the township's responsibility, but the management comes from one source. And they have chief officers throughout that, but they all work together and function as one department, even though they are separate districts and entities. That's what I'm used to seeing. I do see a lot of volunteer departments on their own outside in different municipalities. But in a county setting, I would say, in my experiences, it's not unheard of, but it, the type of diversity you have here is a little less common than what I'm used to seeing.
We are a fairly large county.
You're a very big county.
Size-wise.
Yes, yeah.
Lot of miles out there to cover.
Yeah, and what's interesting, in Eau Claire County, where I come from, 80% of the population either resides in the city or within the six-mile planning limits of it.
And ours is about 60%.
Yep, and I think yours is probably going to be the same. The bulk of the urban population is surrounded around Hutchinson with a lot more.
Well, I think we're all very anxious to see your initial report and to see where you think we should be heading.
Yeah, and again, thanks for the opportunity. I'm excited to put it together.
You look like you do.
Well, I can't resist doing a little political history here.
Okay.
It's just important to note that Commissioner Hurst and I came on board at the same time. We've both been committed to this. We heard this from day one, that we needed to get this done. And here we are in our fourth year with you here saying things that I think are great. Commissioner Sellers is in his second year. Commissioner Hurst is running for reelection. He's currently unopposed, but that doesn't mean he won't find an opponent. My position has two individuals running, so you might have a third person. If we get a third person on board in 2021, then you'll have at least a good two-year run of commitment from this commission...
Terrific.
To move ahead with what you want to do. And so I think that's important, to keep that in mind.
Sure.
That whoever the new third commissioner is, and again, just assuming Commissioner Hurst won't be opposed, you need to work with them and get them on board and make sure they have a clear understanding of this. And I know that Adam will, of course, you know, be doing his due diligence as always. And the final thing, like I say in my company a lot, is I really don't care how soon you get it done for most things, as long as you get it done right the first time. It's taken us many years to get to this point. We can't screw this up.
Right.
And I do know that there's going to be conflict with some of them. I mean, you already made the comment that several of the fire chiefs were like, Reno County is best in my rearview mirror, right? So there is going to be some of that, but you should have that support, again, depending on the new commissioner in January.
Okay.
And you'll have my support through December 31st.
Super, thank you.
If there's anything you need, I'm here.
Thank you. And just a reflection on a couple of things you said. My belief is that success in attaining a goal is continual movement towards it. You have to keep the movement going or it loses the initiative and interest wanes and your commitment is questioned. So my goal is to keep this moving on a timely manner and not say, I'll get back to you in 90 days or 120 days. I need to be in contact with Adam. I need to have that relationship going, and we need to keep things moving on that. And the only other thing I would say, it's, you mentioned, you have got my support to do what you want to do. It's not so much what I'm going to want to do. I'm going to present different options and present the pros and cons and say, you know Reno County, I mean, I feel like I've gotten to know it pretty well in this last week, certainly a lot better than I would have, but you know the history, you know the players, you all know this. So if you say, Bruce, that's a great idea, but I think for Reno County, we're going to do this, you've got my 100% support in that. So I will work my hardest to accomplish what the commission and what's best for Reno County and not necessarily what I think because I come from my own distinct background, albeit with some diverse experience.
But I think it is important, from the commissioner's point of view, that this fire hose you talk about, all gets filtered through Adam.
Yes.
Because he's worked with these players and he knows who they are, what they like, what they don't like, everything from paperwork to trainings or whatever, and then he advises us.
Yep, and I'd like to throw kudos in for Todd, too. He's really committed to everything and he's worked with me really well when I'm here. He provided me with a radio to monitor, and I actually had an opportunity to go out on a couple of fire calls while I was here and see how things work, you know, in person, so that was great.
Okay, thank you, and we're looking forward to that report.
Would you say that was an accurate reflection? I know you want to move on, but would you say that was an accurate reflection? but would you say that was an accurate reflection of our experience?
Well, I, I think you're absolutely right. That has been. And, and Bob has one, two, three, and part of a fourth fire district in his area. I have five and part of a fire district. We split Haven area and maybe part of Yoder. I don't remember which way, but anyway, we split.
Can't remember how that works out down there.
But, and so we know that there's, Bob hit it on the head, there's going to be some little conflict here as we try to do what's best for the fire control and safety of both the firemen and property. We've made some strides. Part of our situation that we've done before, and, and Commissioner Sellers has been involved in this, is, is we try to have a meeting when there's necessary or when we need to go out in the county and have a meeting in different areas. So one of the questions I had was, when is it appropriate time for the commission to set in on, on your meeting? It'll be one when you come back and meet with the fire chiefs? Is that a good time for the commission to just sit in and listen? Or is it when we, when we are in the process of making some serious decisions regarding the plan that you'll present to us? Or when is an appropriate time as you see it in your experience?
Okay. We're smart enough to know that sometimes it's best for us to get out of the way.
Yes.
And, and just stay out of it.
You're absolutely right. Yeah, my, my initial reaction is anytime is a good time for you to get out and, and sit in and listen on the meetings. And the reason I say that is because if you only come out now and then for specific things, people may, one, say, what's going on, there's a commission member here. They, they never come out, there's something bad happening, because people will assume the worst.
Oh, yeah.
And two, they may tend to clam up and not speak freely because you're there. And until there's this trust, oh yeah, here comes in, you know, the commissioner, how you doing, you bet, we have nothing to hide, we'll talk with you. That's part of developing the relationship that I hope is part of the outcome on this. My suggestion would be that I come out and meet with the chiefs on the draft report without the commission being there. I then meet with the commission and let, and discuss what's going on. And then if we all feel good about it, we get together and, and we begin breaking down whatever perceived barriers are there and working together at that point.
That's what I was interested in, is, is finding out what your thoughts were on involvement with the commission and the fire chiefs and the personnel.
And you're right about conflict, and I'm no stranger to conflict. In fact, one of my old mantras was conflict and opportunity, you know, one, one goes hand in hand with the other.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If that's the case, we've got a lot of opportunity to look forward to.
We've had too much opportunity the last two years before.
Okay, thank you, Bruce, for being here, and, and like I say, I look forward to your report and coming back to visit with the chiefs in total. It's now 9:30. I don't see Tom Stanton in the, off, here yet, but I think we better go ahead with our weekly COVID-19 update from the Health Department, Nick Baldetti and the Emergency Manager Director of Adam Washire. And hopefully, if he does arrive, he can update himself with the conversation.
Sure.
Good morning, commissioners. Nick Baldetti, Reno County Health Department Director, appointed health officer of Reno I'll jump into the standard sit rep real quick and then, and then update on a few different items.
Tom, we're just starting on this, so you have missed zero at this point.
As of this morning, the United States is at 2,683,000 cases of COVID-19 and has registered 129,545 deaths associated with COVID-19. For the state of Kansas, after yesterday's release, we have 14,443 laboratory confirmed cases. That's a positive case rate of 8.9%. 1,152 of those cases have required hospitalization, which is roughly 8% of all positives in the state of Kansas, and 270 fatalities associated with COVID-19, which is a death rate of 1.9% currently for the state of Kansas. Locally, for Reno County, as of yesterday, we have 63 laboratory confirmed positives. And as I announced on this morning's sit rep call, we're also investigating a probable case. The situation behind that probable is it's simply an individual who shares the same household with two other known positives. They've presented symptoms but have yet to be tested, and that's why they're not counted into our positive aggregate.
Nick, if you're 63, how many are active?
Nine.
Nine are active.
We have nine active cases.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh. And, and of that total aggregate, 63, 54 have recovered, which constitutes our nine active cases.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, you're fine. Total tests as of this morning, we've tested 2,653 Reno County constituents with 2,590 negatives. That's a positive test rate for Reno County of 2.37%. Again, I, I'll just pause for a moment and reference back to the positive case rate for the state of Kansas is at 8.9%. So we significantly, as of today, are lagging, I shouldn't say lagging, that's a wrong frame of reference, we are, we are beating the, the state case rate as it stands today. Total of the population of Reno County that's been tested as of this morning is 4.2% of, of Reno County having been tested. Additionally, we received information from the hospital this morning. They have a total of 88 patients in the hospital. That's total, that's their total census, that's not 88 COVID cases, but 88 people receiving services at the hospital. They do have five tests pending as of this morning for COVID-19. They do have one positive case currently admitted to the hospital with active COVID-19, as well as one patient who is COVID-19 positive in the ICU that is currently ventilated. So they have two COVID-19 positives within the hospital. That, that is an uptick in, in activity at the, at the hospital in reference to what we've been standing for a number of weeks.
Nick, didn't we go for 10 days or two weeks without any hospitalizations?
We went roughly, we went roughly 18 days without a hospitalization.
And now we have two confirmed in the hospital and one on the left.
Yes, sir.
Do you know their age and if they had a prior immune?
I, I'm going to have to check. In fact, I, I mentioned that on the call this morning, that I'm going to get more specific sit rep in terms of the hospitalization data for those, for those patients.
If you can show that with the county commission, I think that'd be good to know.
Yeah, absolutely. That's generally the activity update that I have. Again, this will be all encapsulated in the sit rep document that goes out daily as well. I just haven't been able to formulate that document yet. A few different updates outside of just simply the activity. On the website, there is a new section on the COVID landing page that is called Scientific Literature. And my hope in, in collaboration with the University of Washington and KU Med, Medical Center, is that frequent summations of the most recent scientific literature will be provided at this landing page. And currently, last night, I, I spent a fair amount of time putting up updates back from, I think I, the first one was June 18th, in terms of summaries of scientific literature. The summaries just seek to try to summate very quickly academic literature that's being published in quick succession around COVID-19 activity and just create a brief sentence summation of the research. So that'll be publicly available and I'll be updating that as frequently as I can, again, partnering with the University of Washington and KU Med Center. Additionally, the governor came out yesterday and in her press conference, she announced that she plans to administer, I don't know the number, executive order requiring or mandating mask use in, in the state of Kansas. We haven't seen the language of the formal executive order. I know there's a ton of, well, there's just a ton of opinion, both pro and con. I've received many an email in the short span, and I think some of you have been on those emails as well, as well as many a call. I do want to make a few comments and, and I'm sure we're going to continue to speak on the issue, but my role as the health officer for Reno County, appointed by you, the Board of Health and the Board of County Commissioners, is to advocate, educate, and install when necessary fundamental public health practices that ensure the safety and well-being and public health of Reno County constituency. And so my next statement is not a decision. Any recommendation forthcoming will be done in consultation with the Board of Health as we've done or I've tried to do throughout the duration of, of this event. But it is unarguable that mask use is a fundamental public health practice that can mitigate the spread of any aerosolized body. It doesn't have to be fancy. It, it isn't about the virus, potential, the viral body spreading through how tight-knit the mask is itself or what have you. What it's about is simply creating a barrier between the respiratory pathway and the expulsion of the aerosolized droplets. That's all it is. That barrier and wearing a mask is a action in protection of those around you, not in protection of yourself. Thus, if you are to wear a mask, you're seeking to potentially mitigate any potential spread that you are activating through whatever activities you expunge. In concert with high awareness and active hygiene practices, especially washing your hands and social distancing, mask use, social distancing, and hygiene have the greatest efficacy of mitigating any type of viral contagion, especially an upper respiratory We, again, we haven't seen the executive order language, and so we don't know the legalities. And I know we've asked the district attorney, Tom Stanton, here to potentially talk about House Bill 2016, the implications of enforcement from the court of law. But my statement regardless is that Reno County, to this point, has done what has been asked of them to mitigate as best they can through this event. And we should not be washed through political ideologues to ensure the safety of our friends, families, and neighbors. It is contingent upon every individual to have a responsibility to be accountable to themselves and to those around them. And that accountability can be enacted through many different mechanisms, again, hygiene, social distancing, and mask use. And we're going to have a conversation, guarantee it, about what the governor is proposing in, in an executive order that we haven't seen yet. But it's important that regardless, the regular constituent relies on fundamental public health guidelines to ensure that Reno County continues to do the best we can in mitigating spread for our community, especially as we see our counties that share a jurisdictional boundary with us and their case counts increasing exponentially. Even in comparison to those to our north, McPherson, Salina, Celine, Cedric County, we're still in a relatively good place. But I will be honest, it's not a ra, it's not a flag raising, but the hospital, the hospital activity concerns me, especially as we have two with five pending, which is far more activity than we've seen in, at, at least two weeks. And we have some major events planned for our community. And there's variables associated with each one of those, with those events. Outdoor events, much more conducive to the implication and application of indoor events. And that's scientifically proven, and we're going to have those conversations. But I just want to be clear that mask use should not be political.
Say, say what you said again about outdoor versus indoor in a different words.
Sure.
I think maybe the public might have missed what you just said.
Sure.
At least I wasn't comfortable with what you just said.
Sure. Previous to, early on in this event, there was great concern over the, the viral body itself resting for long periods of time on any surface regardless of the environment. Research, again, continues to expand almost daily. And at this point, there is far less risk associated with outdoor events, again, in consultation with social distancing, proper hygiene, maintaining distance, but the, the potential of exposure and contraction of a respiratory viral body in an outdoor event where the viral body and aerosolization is exposed to outdoor conditions is much less likely at this point in time. And I think that's also indicative of many of the outdoor activities, such as baseball tournaments that we've held since they were allowed in the state of Kansas, and we've had zero activity associated with those events. But make no mistake, the Health Department is continually, continuing to have conversations with every potential event that is either considered for our community and/or planned or has been planned since the opening of the state. So I'm sure we're going to talk more about it. But lastly, just as an update to the board, the State Fair Board meets this afternoon. I will be in attendance. It is still unclear on whether the state, sorry, the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, the governor's office, will take part in the meeting. But I have been asked, as the Reno County Health Officer, to be at the State Fair Board meeting, and I will be there at 2 o'clock this afternoon. Additionally, schools are hot and heavy into their establishment of, creation of their reopening plans, but they're also anxiously waiting for the Kansas Department of Environment's. On July 10th, they will be receiving what has been rumored to be perhaps a 500-page document in regard to reopening plans for, for their districts and their, and their schools. I've been in close consultation and collaboration with, at this point, Bueller, Haven, and Hutchinson School Districts, as well as I've had just individual phone calls with Fairfield and, and Pretty Prairie. But I would expect, much like the, which I'll get to in a second, the K-DAD's, Kansas Department of Aging and Disabilities, recommendations that are going to be levy to the schools is that I would expect a requirement of health officer administration and application of all reopening plans. So I will, needless to say, I'll be, I'll be busy reading for a while. That leads into long-term care facilities. Three, three weeks ago, I believe, three weeks ago Friday, K-DAD's released reopening guidance for long-term care facilities, which states as such, in close consultation and administration of plans with the health officer. And I have a number of plans that are, that are being reviewed right now and working with our local long-term care facilities about potential, their potential reopening plans. So I spoke a lot this morning comparatively speaking, but I might let Adam do his report and then stand for any questions or, unless something more is said at this moment.
Tom, do you have a time restriction? Tom, do you have a time restriction?
Commissioner, I was in the middle of a meeting that I'm kind of in charge of, and I asked him to continue on while I came down and answered any questions that the commission might have. So, if you could take me as soon as possible.
Okay, well, I think your statement would be more appropriate later, but if you need to move on, please come to the podium and talk to the commission about, from your perspective as District Attorney, the questions that we're dealing with this morning, as far as a governor's order that we haven't seen yet, and the fact of the matter that the commission needs to probably make some kind of statement as far as our approach towards that.
I have not had a chance to talk to Mr. Sullivan about this. I did send him some information last night. Obviously, he is your counsel on all of these issues, and I'm certainly not in any way meaning to step on his toes or interfere with his responsibilities. But I will tell you that things have changed since the passage of House Bill 2016 as far as how health orders are enforced. I think the legislature was concerned, looking at the legislation, of the possibility of having criminal responses to the exercise of constitutional rights of assembly and worship and those types of things. And so, they have removed the criminal aspect of this response to the governor's orders. So instead of looking at having Class A misdemeanors for violation of the governor's orders, what we have are the possibility of civil lawsuits. The specifics are that, let me find the proper section here, this also is a lengthy document. And my understanding of the law as it stands today is that any violation of an order issued by the governor, or by the local health department, or by this board, as the county health board, is now, has an ability to incur a civil penalty up to $2,500. In order to get that civil penalty, the office would have to file an actual civil lawsuit. And this is what it states, violations of the section shall be enforced through an action brought under Chapter 60 of the Kansas statutes annotated and amendments thereto by the Attorney General or the county or district attorney in the county in which the violation took place. Civil penalties sued for and recovered by the county and district attorney should be paid into the, or will be paid into the general fund of the county where the proceedings were instigated. And we also, I also have the ability, under the statute, to bring an action to enjoin or obtaining a restraining order against the person who has violated an order. As you can probably imagine, I do not have the resources to file a civil lawsuit against everyone who might decide to violate a violation of a requirement for a mask. Your costs, the county's costs would be out of this world, and we just don't have the staff for that. Looking at responses just to the rumors of this order would indicate that there are a plethora of Reno County residents who will refuse to follow this order, which is not why I'm here to discuss whether they should or shouldn't. My point is, it appears that that's going to happen. And there's no way for us to really enforce these orders the way, in the manner in which we would have several months ago. The other thing about it, now that this is a civil situation, I haven't talked to all of the law enforcement agencies, but normally, when a police officer is called out to a civil situation, they call it a civil situation and no reports are done. And so unless I receive information from either law enforcement or the Health Department about someone who's violating these orders, I would have no basis upon which to file a lawsuit. I have no investigatory ability in the District Attorney's Office. So, that enforcement of the governor's order would be problematic, and even enforcement of a local order from the Health Board would have issues. I was asked on the call this morning about businesses who might want to follow the governor's order or a local order requiring face masks in order to ensure their licensing and their ongoing business interests. Certainly, a business could post that they would only be serving persons who were wearing masks, or a right to refuse persons who were not wearing masks. That way, somebody coming into their establishment would, could be told to leave, or not enter at all. And if there was an issue with that, by somebody wanted to push the issue, then law enforcement could be called based on other criminal statutes, criminal trespassing, or other crimes that would involve the actions of that person. So, it could, I could see this evolving into a situation where a prosecutor's office would become involved. But at this point, unless I received that type of information from law enforcement, I would have no basis to file a declaratory, for declaratory relief, or for an injunction, or for a lawsuit. The other thing that I want to make sure that you're aware of is that this new statute allows this board to make its own decision regarding masks. The statute before pretty much superseded, any governor's orders pretty much superseded your orders. That's not, that's not the current state of the law. I'm trying to look at the section that I noted yesterday to Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Baldetti. Section 33 of the new statute modifies KSA 48925, and allows this board, acting as a Board of Health, to issue an order that is less restrictive than that of the governor. I'll try to find those provisions here in just a moment. Subsection H of that section indicates that the Board of County Commissioners of any county may issue an order relating to public health that includes provisions that are less stringent than the provisions of an executive order effective statewide issued by the governor. Any Board of County Commissioners issuing such an order must make the following findings and include such findings in the order. The board has consulted with the local health officer and other local health officials regarding the governor's executive order. Following such consultation, implementation of the full scope of the provisions of the governor's order are not necessary to protect the public health and safety of the county and any other relevant information. And I think that was also the intent of that statute, was to transfer power from the state government down to the county commissions to determine for their own people what kind of orders should be established. So, regardless of what the governor does, I think this body is going to have to make a decision of whether or not you will issue an order requiring face masks in any capacity. And those then would be the orders that we would be concerned about enforcing through injunctive or civil action.
A question maybe to you, but maybe also to our county counselor. You're in an elected position, filling in, haven't been yourself elected, but is elected position. Does the county commission, Joe, have the right to advise the county attorney, or the district attorney, to not prosecute certain types of cases?
I suppose you could give him whatever advice you want, but from what Tom just read, he has a separate statutory duty to exercise his own judgment. Oftentimes, certainly that's the case.
So we could suggest to him what our feelings are towards what should be his time be spent on?
I don't think I want to go there.
I think you could suggest that ultimately, under the powers of the District Attorney's Office and my elected responsibilities, I have to make all prosecution decisions ultimately myself. I can't be ordered one way or another to...
Yeah, but you're suggesting that your office is pretty busy at the current time.
Well, we are, we have a full caseload. My biggest problem is, you would have, I would have to have information given to me that would substantiate that it was a voluntary and intentional violation of the governor's order, first of all, and that, and then I would have to be convinced that somehow the action I would be taking would have an effect on whether or not that order was going to be complied with. And I just think there's no way that we're going to go around this community and say, oh, there's somebody who doesn't have a mask, send his name to the District Attorney's Office. You know, we can collect those names, but there's absolutely no way I could file a separate legal lawsuit against all of those individuals, nor would I necessarily think that that was the best use of our time, or the state's and the county's funds. Plus, I'll be frank about this, it's one of those situations where it's very difficult for any, either elected or appointed official to say, I'm going to file a lawsuit to make you do something you don't want to do that's not criminal in nature. That's a very difficult decision to make. If it was a situation, depending on the situation, how egregious it might be, if it put other, if it's clearly put other persons at risk. For example, if there was a violation of one of Mr. Baldetti's isolation orders or quarantine orders, then I would have no qualms at all about seeking relief from the courts, and have the courts order someone to either pay a fine, or to stay at home, or face contempt of court charges. So that's kind of where we are, because that would clearly be a health issue that affects other people in the community. I can't make that same determination just because someone doesn't wear a mask, or doesn't wash their hands.
The legislature, I think, could have, given this, because it's a civil case, could have included the county counselor as someone with the authority to pursue that.
And I wish they would.
And I'm sure he doesn't, but they have limited to the county and district attorney, which is, as you indicated, the prosecutor, prosecuting office.
Can I just jump in here? Probably, I mean, there's a million different situations that we could kind of spitball. But the real-world example that I get in my emails, that I hear from people, is I'm going to the XYZ event, and mask required, and we see somebody not wearing a mask, so we make everybody wear a mask, kind of have 100%, you know, application, as best you can. Somebody's not wearing a mask, and they go down and say, you know, sorry, you got to put a mask on if you have to leave. And they say, I'm not leaving, and I'm not putting a mask on because it violates my constitutional rights. And so they go, okay, well, you have to leave, I'm not leaving. We're going to have to call the police, call the police. So then what you're saying is that in a situation like that, the police, in theory, would come in and write some sort of a report about that person's actions, and then, let's just say the police get the individual out there, and everything's fine, there's no crazy violence. And so then it would come to your office through a police report. Is that actionable through your lawsuit system?
It could be.
Okay, yeah, let's talk about that, because that's more of a real world, what people are concerned about, in my opinion, whether it's a business, or a sporting event, or a high school, somebody says, I'm not going, because it violates my constitutional right, and it dragged me out of here. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I think that the example I used earlier for a business, businesses are separate entities, and they have a right to refuse service, especially if they notify the public of certain conditions upon which they would refuse service. For example, you say, we've all seen, growing up, the no shirt, no shoes, no service signs, I don't see them very often anymore, and that may be a comment on how people dress. But at this point in time, if they were to post that, then somebody came in, they could call the police and ask them to be removed because they are violating their rights, and it would be a criminal trespass. Now, whether or not that would result in a suit, would have, there'd be a lot of factors. Was the person then fight to stay there, or did, when the officers arrived, peacefully? It would depend a lot on those things. The other thing is that...
The fact that officers were called in and wrote a report would not kick your office into motion automatically. You would still get your litmus test out of all these different things?
I would still, what it would do, initiate a review by our office, by me. And then we would make a prosecution decision based on that review. As I indicated, it would need to be a situation where I felt that there were persons, persons were threatened, or persons were placed in jeopardy because of the actions of that person. And then I might possibly file that civil suit or injunction.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom, very much.
All right.
Thanks for your time.
All right, thank you.
We appreciate it.
We hope whatever we decide here today doesn't complicate your task.
Whatever you decide is what we'll deal with.
Okay, I'd like, at this point in time, I think we have someone in the audience that would like to address the commission. So, Paul, you want to address this subject? Aren't you here for this subject?
If this is the time, everybody, if you want...
I'm sorry?
You have to come up.
If this is the time that...
Yeah, I'd like you to. That's up to you. It's up to you.
Okay. You can put in a timer too.
I'll put myself, well, actually, I don't have my...
Well, actually, since you're talking about it, I didn't have time to agenda, you're not obligated to the five-minute time, and I probably shouldn't have said that.
You shouldn't have said that.
But I don't want to hear about it later from the county counselor.
Yeah, no, this is, actually, this has been a very interesting time, frankly, just, I really appreciate you guys, and I'm surprised, frankly, more people aren't here. I was, certainly had a lot of activity, which brought me here. Somewhat in summation.
Before they record, introduce yourselves.
Oh, yeah. I'm Paul Waggoner, 673rd, business owner and representative from the 104th House District. Here's my basic thing. You know, of course, in early June, the legislature passed House Bill 2016, which removed certain powers from the governor and gave it to the counties as to executive orders. The bill itself was actually not controversial. It had broad bipartisan support, it passed the House, 107 to 12, and it was, of course, passed the Senate by an equally large margin, and also was signed by the governor. This is really your first test case of what's gone on with House Bill 2016. It was just passed here in early June. You know, I am a little bit of a data, I'm actually kind of a lot of a data person, and I, you know, have been tracking COVID-19 numbers from the KDHE website since the thing went up in the middle of March. And again, just, I mean, Nick has obviously given us some local perspective, but, you know, in the month of April, you know, the state of Kansas, we're having like a 13.7% overall positive rate. In May, it was 9.1%, in June, it's 5.8%. Hospitalizations in the month of April was 13.4% of all known cases, you had a hospitalization involved. In May, it was 5.5%, in June, it was 6.6%. And I'm going, May 29th to June 29th is kind of my, the 29th is my deadline. Likewise, in March, death rate for all known cases, or for the positive test cases, was 3.5%. In the month of May, for the state of Kansas, it was 1.39%, in June, it was 1.31%. You know, I mean, you clearly have some very good numbers, or very good trend lines. You know, things have changed a lot since April, when this first hit. You know, again, COVID-19 initially inspired a lot of fear, there was a lot of unknown, I mean, it was felt in Topeka, everywhere across the state. You know, we do have a lot better... You know, we do have a lot better track record and kind of contour of how this thing, you know, has played out. It is a fact that up to 90% of the people are either asymptomatic or have very mild cases. It's also very true that the demographic, which is less than 1% of the state, which is nursing home or confined person, you know, like prisons, things like that, you know, have 40 to 50% of the total deaths that have been recorded. The median age of death from COVID in Kansas is right at, I think, 80 years old, which means half the people who have died from it have been over the age of 80, you know, I mean, it's a very specific demographic. You have, from census data, you know that the population of 75 and up is basically 8% of your total population, they have 75 to 80% of the serious effects. The 55 and under, which is well over 2/3 of your population, you know, has, you know, roughly 10% or less of the effects. And again, we also know that underlying conditions are a big factor in this. As far as a healthy person who does not have any underlying conditions, I mean, their risk factor from COVID-19, you know, is very different even from what we have known. Again, Reno County, and we, I really, I will totally compliment Reno County, you guys have a great website on this, or a great data deal that he does, as far as on the positive cases, on just generally what's going on. Again, the Reno County positive case numbers are under 2.5%, you know, which is well under what the state, and that's cumulative, I'm not sure what it's like running for the month of June, but I mean, the state rate was like 5.8% for the month of June. You know, the things that motivate the governor, you know, do not always apply everywhere. It has been noted, I was just reading this while I was sitting there, is that 76 of 105 counties have had zero new cases in the last week, well, zero to, under five, you know, new cases, that things that may make sense in certain counties, you know, and may prompt the governor, you know, to make her executive order, you know, don't apply everywhere. And I would think Reno County has a very good case in point. I will mention, and part of what got me here, because I do have a business that I'm a part of, is that I did a Facebook post on this, you know, running these numbers and just talking about this topic about nine o'clock last night, and, I mean, typically, when you do a Facebook thing, I don't know, you know, you might get a couple hundred, you know, people, not people, comments, but as far as, you know, people click on it or whatever, you know, this thing had hit 7,500 people, I mean, it really had 87 shares, 107 comments. I think it fair to say they were overwhelmingly opposed to the thing of making it mandatory, which, again, is a question. We have this a lot, actually, with our customer, the customer base, again, doing, you know, seat cushions for primarily churches, but for public buildings, is that you do have, some groups are like very, they want, there are materials that are used primarily in hospital settings, they're antibacterial, antimicrobial fabrics, you know, other people don't care, you know, at all, they don't even ask the question. But, I mean, some people are very, I mean, they have underlying health conditions, I mean, the whole thing of wearing a mask is very important to them or limiting their activity, I certainly understand that, and it totally makes a lot of sense. You know, other people are just much more, I mean, I'm healthy, the risk is low, you know, on and on. The, I guess, in closing, the question, I know what really bothers people, is the fact this is a mandate. I mean, and again, she hasn't released, and I, again, frankly, don't have a mix here, but as far as Stanton, how on earth does the governor announce a mandate, or an executive order, excuse me, and the actual details of it, it's supposed to go into effect on a Friday, and she's not even going to give you the details until Thursday, and realizing that county commissions across the state do have, you know, authority as laid out in House Bill 2016, you know, to have a less severe approach than what the executive order would be, I mean, how that gives them any time to respond? I mean, that boggles my mind a little bit. But that being said, you have the contours of what she's proposing, and I would think a mandate is the last resort, it would be something, you would have to be having numbers and situations a lot worse than what you have, and at this point, I think it's very premature, and I would certainly urge you as a citizen, and I think speaking on behalf of the people I've heard from currently, to not have this, or to not have Reno County go along with the governor's executive orders.
Paul, I'd like to ask you some questions.
Okay, sure.
Certainly knowledgeable on this subject and so forth. The Legislative Oversight Committee, will they be meeting this week?
You know, that.
And I think, does everybody know what, that's a group of legislators that can say yes or no to the governor?
Right, right, it's basically the legislative research, the legislative leadership of both the Republican and Democrats in the House and the Senate, plus two committee are from the, I think, Senate Ways and Means and Commerce or something in the House Committee or Appropriations. Yeah, I will say I'm a little surprised because I thought that executive orders within the next day had review by the state, it's the State Finance Council, I think, is actually who does that, and so I'm not, you know, I mean, I had been in touch with Dan Hawkins, who's a House Majority Leader, to kind of get some feedback, but I hadn't gotten anything but a Facebook thing that he had where he talked more about county commissions. So I'm a little puzzled by that, because I would have thought they would have had to approve this, or that they would have a chance to either veto it or not, because I think she has to get five votes or six votes on that council to have something go into effect.
Well, I'm surprised that they're not having an urgent meeting to.
Yeah, I mean, I totally agree.
Knowing the makeup of that group, it seems like to me that they would want to be involved in that decision.
Yeah, I would think so.
I think you're, correct me if I'm wrong, but you're basically speaking that you feel like people do not want to be mandated, they don't have to, they, it's, it's, don't tell me I have to, is that, is that your primary objection?
That, I think, I think that rubs people incredibly wrong, I mean, it's, again, it's, I, that's a good summary.
Okay, and I realize this is a debate between you and me, but do you not feel that there is some science that masks do help control the spread of the virus? Are you suggesting that that's not true?
No, I, I mean, again, and correct me if I'm wrong, I know part of the issue is when, and again, this is layman's perspective, but.
Well, we appreciate you coming, or at least I appreciate you coming.
Is that, you know, COVID cases, when a person has COVID, I mean, they're literally only contagious as it is for like five or six days, is that not correct? I mean, otherwise, a person who's had COVID, they're not a danger or a threat to anybody health-wise, are they?
It depends, but generally speaking.
Could you speak into the microphone for those at home? Just kind of get six feet apart here.
It depends, Nick Baldetti, Reno County Health Department Director, Health Officer. It depends a bit, again, the more research continues to come out, but, so, there are some pre-published studies, which pre-published means that they have not been peer-reviewed as of yet, so they are pushed out before potentially being reviewed by scientific peers. But there is some suggestion of adolescent age groups in asymptomatic cases, spreading or shedding the virus itself at a much greater clip than adults, I think it was above age 40, if I'm remembering right, truthfully, it's been a week since I read the paper. However, Representative Wagner also has a point in just that disease investigation associated with COVID-19 right now is that should an individual present symptoms, so they come down with one of the many symptoms associated or linked to COVID-19, that we backdate two days from symptom onset. So if someone had a cough, tight chest, runny nose, what have you, and got tested on Wednesday and the positive comes back on Thursday, we backtrace to Monday. So any interactions simply in that two-day window is the expected exposure window. And then the implications is much more severe of exposure, which makes it generally common sense in that if you're showcasing symptoms, you're much more virulent because you have a higher saturation of the viral body within your bloodstream, and then the application of aerosolization, et cetera, et cetera. But in non-symptomatic, researches, we're asking for quarantine post 10 days of no more symptoms. But there is some budding research to Representative Wagner's comments, that in non-symptomatic people, it is beginning to oscillate in terms of the confidence intervals of how long quarantine post no symptoms. But if you have symptoms, you're much more likely to spread the virus than, I think, originally the asymptomatic spreading concern as a few months ago. Does that help a little bit?
Yeah. I have another question of Representative Wagner. I think you would agree, as a citizen of Reno County, I'm very proud of our Health Department. We have, what, 63 cases at this point in time, 54 have recovered, it's much less than the state average per our population of Reno County. I, and I'm not speaking for the other commissioners, but I'm very proud of what our Health Department has done to this point to keep our numbers very low. The numbers in Sedgwick County per population are much higher, I kind of feel that some of that is due to the county commission saying, people go out and do whatever the hell you want to do. We've taken a little more conservative approach and said, people, try to be as safe as you can be in your daily lives. Texas, Florida, Arizona, California are showing huge increases. It's a little hard for me to believe that those increases aren't going to be seen by us here in a few weeks. Do you feel that way at all?
The, I mean, certainly plausible, I mean, as far as, and, well, the, I mean, it's certainly plausible, you know, at the same point, I would say, another aspect of it, of course, is, you know, the whole question of bending the curve, as it was, was to keep unnecessary deaths happening, you know, because of exceeding hospital capacity. And I've read, and again, I defer, I'm curious what Nick would have to say about this, because I have read, like, some of these journal articles on this that are serious topics, but multiple times, they will tell you that the total number of people who eventually get it, it's not a different number, it's just rather than having it peak and overwhelm your hospital a certain point, you know, you spread it out.
But doesn't the fact that if we can spread this out somewhat, doesn't that maybe help us have school in the fall?
The, you know, I mean, we are spreading it out somewhat, I mean, it clearly has been, I mean, the rate of just, I mean, again, when you had a situation like in New Jersey or New York, at the time, you know, back in April, they were running like 25, 35% positive test rates on people taking tests. I mean, we're nowhere, you know, even close to anything like that. And where you have a hospital that has, what, 30, 40-bed possibility for COVID, I mean, the hospitalization and death rates, to me, are the things that you watch that are the most concerning, you know, I mean, the actual case rate, I mean, given that for so many people, there's such a little impact, is certainly less concerning, certainly from a layman's perspective, it really is.
You and I have debated enough, I, as a 72-year-old person that's in that rate, that if I catch this, I'm at extreme risk, I have some difference, even if I'm one person to die, I don't want to be that person. Any other commissioners have anything to the citizen that's speaking, question or discussion?
I mean, well, first of all, I'm also having an immune system, and so I don't want to be the second person to die. One of the things that you haven't addressed, Paul, and this is in your representative role, was the comments that Nick made about this becoming a partisan issue and less of a health issue. And there does seem to be that sense coming up in different ways.
Would you, I'd be curious what your thoughts are about that as an elected official who has an affiliated party, and I don't care what your party is, although I know it, but seriously, you know what I'm saying?
Well, I mean, I will say, you know, like at the legislature, once we came back after the COVID stuff, as far as mask-wearing was, I mean, I don't know if the Democrats were coached to make sure they had a mask, you know, just because, but there was a clear kind of partisan divide, it wasn't that, as if your Republicans didn't have masks, but it was more, you know, sporadic, maybe a quarter of the caucus had it all with the Democrat delegation, and I'm, I sit on, I'm part of the overflow onto that side, so I'm, you know, well aware, I mean, so that, you know, you'd see it in Topeka, just, I don't know if it's a different perception of risk, a personal risk, or if it's in the same, a parallel case might be the question of like a Second Amendment right, I mean, people who don't have guns just really don't care, and it's like, what's the big deal, while other people, you know, it is kind of a big deal to have a right, even if they're not literally carrying a gun, but just the fact they have the right, it certainly goes back to sort of America, you know, tradition, but it's, I mean, you know, you'll see it in how governors respond, I mean, certainly Democrat governors have tended to responded very differently, I mean, compare Texas, Oklahoma, South Dakota, Iowa to, you know, Kansas and different states, I mean, it's, it can be a question of the role of government, you know, versus just individual common sense, but, I don't know, if I'm directly answering your question.
But aren't we seeing more Republican governors increasing their restrictions on their population in terms of using masks and things, as they've seen numbers skyrocket?
Of course, skyrocket's a relative term, I mean.
Everything I just said was a relative term, except Republican governor. So I'm just curious, just your thoughts, because this keeps coming up.
Sure, I would think you respond, you know, to the numbers, I mean, if Reno County had different numbers, you know, I would think that the perception of risk, or the actual fact of risk, you know, would be different and would be higher. And the, so, I mean, it's really, you know, I'm more data-driven, but, you know, but, I mean, the public has a certain perception as to, you know, if they know anybody, you know, who's had any sickness involved with this, or, again, for a lot of people, it's like their spouse has a thing, so then they're very cautious, you know, but I think it's, from a public policy standpoint, I think it's much wiser to focus on the 8% of the population that is really, literally driving the numbers in hospitalizations and deaths, rather than continue to limit what the 70% of the population that could be, that could function well with this, and it's not the manifest threat to them, I think their interests have been, you know, not to say overlooked, but they're much more, they can be overlooked, I mean, again, I mean, some states, I mean, on the East Coast, I mean, we have this trouble, we're a national, we have salesmen going across the nation, and a lot, certainly in the Northeast, they can't go there, you know, without going into a quarantine, and so, and some of the states, they won't even let people from Kansas come, I mean, just, even though they have much worse data, I'm kind of surprised by that, but they, you know, they say if you go to Massachusetts, you know, you got to sit out 14 days before you can even, whatever, go talk to somebody, and it just, you know, it just, you know, kills, you know, business interactions.
My last question's controversial, and this is what we both get paid for. My last question's controversial, and this is what we both get paid for. And if you don't want to answer today, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay, you can send me a text or give me a call. I'll buy lunch. But what I wake up thinking about isn't the 70% that's healthy. Yeah, I want to take care of them, they're driving our business, they're driving our economy. What I think about is, how many deaths am I willing to accept in the name of commerce and schools and baseball practice and Hobart netter games and people going down to, I don't know, Hobby Lobby and shopping? How many deaths is okay for me to accept in Reno County? And if you had to sit in my chair and make that decision, I mean, before we went to some draconian, everybody has to wear a mask, is it, what's the number? I mean, what's the number, right, before I go to Nick and I say, or I go to the commissioners and say, I recommend that we require masks for everybody in Reno County?
The, not directly to your point, but somewhat to your point. At the same point, I talked to a former head of the state of Kansas epidemiologist who works at Kansas Health Institute when this thing first got going. And I asked him, when you do your stuff, you know, like when you do your reports as it is, are you looking specifically at the disease, that your infectious disease you're considering, or do you consider holistically, you know, the broader effects of your proposals? And he said, no, it's a very narrow thing, they're just looking strictly at the disease that that's for public officials to consider, you know, as far as other things. And so, in the sense of, and not so much this applies to masks, but just in general, that it's a known fact that for every 1% increase in unemployment, you know, you have a certain increase in suicides, you have a certain increase in mental health, you have a certain increase in, you know, people going into poverty, you have as far as alcoholism, I mean, all sorts of, there's all sorts of negative consequences to a negative economy. And so, I think in the bigger picture, you know, it's, I mean, it's, you know, who has a mathematical model that you would even trust on those questions? But, you know, but your point is well taken, and it would probably require a little more thought, just because I'm not sure I like exactly how it's framed, but I do understand what you're getting at, and.
I mean, you understand that I have.
Think about that and get back to Bob with your thoughts. The rebuttal I would have to Bob's question to you, and we probably need to continue here, but I just heard Nick saying that Reno County is being so successful that we're going to maybe be able to let some of the people in our nursing homes be a little more open than they used to be, and that we can still take care of them in a healthy way. I think it's important to think about those people. I have a 95-year-old brother-in-law that's at Wesley Towers that hasn't been allowed to be out, Paul, for four months. I talked to him Sunday, he's got a good attitude, but I can't imagine everybody's attitude is that way. Those people, we have a responsibility to, too, in this community, I think.
Yeah.
And I agree with you, that's the group that's going to die if they catch the virus. But I think we have a responsibility as a governing group to say, community, let's keep this out of our community. And that's my position today, is the things that we can do wisely as individuals to help the whole county is maybe not our, maybe is not our requirement, but that's what we need to do for our people. That's what you do as a good person, isn't it? Don't you, as a good person, don't you do things to help your community? You get on committees to help your, to me, if I can help one person not contract this virus, I'm doing what I should be doing as a good human being.
You know, I think Nick is looking at all different opportunities for it. I agree with you, it's tough to not see family, to not be able to contact family. I think Nick will be able to work out methods so that there can be some interaction, more personal, with regard to those that can't get out, that are in the homes. I know it's been extremely tough on person that's had someone die, which I brought up at a previous meeting. But to go along with this and not to carry out this too much longer is, you know, I'm not in favor of required mandatory mask-wearing by citizens. Do I wear one? Yes, I do on occasions. When I feel that I need to be protected, if I go to a meeting like last week in Sedgwick County, and I needed to purchase an item, I couldn't get here readily and needed it quickly, I wore a mask. And I used the wipes when I came out of that store as well as the meeting, and even wiped off my keys to make sure as much as possible that I didn't take anything back home, or to me as much as possible. Plainly said, I think we've stated this before, and I think it deserves saying all the time, is if you have a health condition that exposure might mean grave concern for you or others that you associate with, wear a mask. If you are of a certain age, like we've discussed, there's only two of us here in that room in that area, but if it makes you feel comfortable, wear a mask. If you're sick and have to go out, no matter what it is, because you don't know at that point in time what it might be, wear a mask. And wash your hands. Try not to touch your face while you're, until you clean your hands, you know? Those are little things that the citizens here, I think, have done pretty well. I think also we've become a little more relaxed. I think I see that. I would urge citizens that if a business says you have to have a mask to come in and shop, you know, comply. If I get stopped by sheriff or police officers for speeding or something like that, I'm going to pay attention and do what he says. I would expect the same courtesy from each one of us if I start to go into a business and want to buy something there and don't have my mask on. I'm going back out, and they say you have to have a mask, I'll go back out to my vehicle and I'll put my mask on and go in, as a courtesy, as a respect. I think we should follow right now what the Reno County Health Department and Health Officer has recommended for Reno County, and his current stance on Reno County regarding COVID-19, and the recommendations presented currently in effect. I think that's a proper stance that I would like to see us stay on from my standpoint at this chair.
I would agree with both of them.
Thank you, Paul, for being here.
I think you guys are really, very, very good.
Appreciate your thoughts and comments there.
And get back to me on that question, Paul. Paul?
Yeah, no.
And get back to me on that question.
Yeah. Until you're there, it's tough to make a decision, isn't it?
Well, and I would just say that I agree with both of what you said. I am not in favor of community-wide mask-wearing, but.
Mandate.
Mandate. But I do think that this advisory board needs to struggle with the issue that Nick is struggling with and thinking about, what is a spike that's going to cause us to become concerned? How many new patients, or is it hospitalization? You know, right now, we know the number of beds, we've got some capacity for new patients, and to your point, we've kind of flattened things out, so we have some room maybe to open the door on a few things, and maybe close the door on some other things that seem to be high-risk behaviors. But I do struggle every day when I see these reports, am I going to see a death? And I do feel a personal responsibility for that, as, I don't, y'all can speak for yourself, but I feel a personal responsibility when that day comes, and so.
Okay, we've lost our county counselor. I guess I'm a little confused about if we need to take an action, what our action might I'm confused about whether the governor's action will actually be enforced. Joe, help the chair here. Do we need to, as it stands right now, the governor says come Friday, a mask is mandated in the state of Kansas. And as we understand that resolution that was passed by the legislature, the county commissions or health board within a given area have the right to amend what she says
in effect, to adopt their own regulation with lesser standards. And from what Tom said today, that would supersede the governor's order.
But if we sit here today and do absolutely nothing, the governor's order then would take place on Friday?
Yes. And I don't, I mean, I don't know, it's going to be, I would think it's probably pretty difficult for you to get something in place by Friday.
Well, we don't even know what to put in place, and we don't know what the governor says, right?
Yeah, we got, well, yeah, we'd have to look at what she's done.
Well, I've heard a lot of rumor and innuendo, but until I see something arriving.
Well, can, if the commission was willing this morning to say that in Reno County, masks would not be mandated as law, couldn't we pass that this morning? And I'm not sure that that's the will of the commission, but I'm just saying if that's the will of the commission, can't we do that today? We're not going to meet on Friday.
You're talking about, you're talking about a document, a written document that's going to have to be prepared and that articulates what we are requiring.
Don't we have that in place right now with our county order?
The order that Nick put in place?
Yes.
Oh, three? Nick, you want to address the contents of that as applied to masks?
Commissioner Nick Baldetti, health officer. Currently in place through, I believe, July 5th is Health Order 20-03, which makes specific reference to the Reno County Moving Forward document, which strongly suggests mask use within the community. And again, that is set to expire on Monday. Wait, July, is that Sunday? July 5th is Sunday?
That's the 6th. The 6th is Monday.
Do we do 5th or 6th? 6th, okay, so Monday, the 6th, I'm sorry. Again, counsel would have to.
So can, Joe, can we extend that resolution this morning to sometime after Tuesday of next week?
Sure you could, I wish I had it, I wish I had it in front of you, but, yeah, sure we can extend that.
Well, it just seems like if that's the, I'm sorry.
I'm not, you know, I'm kind of caught cold on this, and I'm sorry.
I understand.
But that order was issued prior to the governor's order, and I'm wondering, it makes no reference to the governor's order or the higher standard. And I'm wondering if good legislation would make reference to the governor's order and say that it specifically is written to supersede it.
So, sorry, I don't mean to outstep, but that's the thought I had. And I don't want, I would counsel suggestion as well, but I don't wonder if to give guidance formally, the board to give guidance in expectation of the governor's executive order, and then I could work with counsel in short order in the installation of a health order language that makes reference to potential forthcoming executive order. Without meeting, I.
Well, maybe as an advisory board, we could get the governor's order, have you review it, have Joe review it, come up with your recommendation, email or give it to us, or call us, email it to us so we can read it, and then we could respond to you as individuals. It's not as good as all three of us being in the room, but I understand there's lives to be lived and things to be done, and we all have, well, we all have lives.
With deference to our health officer and the county counselor, I personally think all we have to do today is to say that we have a health order.
20-day show three.
In, that is active. Maybe extend that, and then go beyond that and say that in Reno County, masks are not mandated. I don't, that's what you're going to come back to us with, I think, if I'm hearing the commissioners, while all three of us think that they're an excellent idea and should be used aggressively, we're not willing to mandate it. And so I don't understand why we just can't make a motion to that extent today and be done with this. Joe's wanting to write a document, and I think it's very clear what I'm suggesting is that the Reno County Commission is saying on Tuesday, June 30th, until we rescind this order that masks are not mandated, they're highly recommended, but they're not mandated in Reno County.
And what I struggle with is, we have not read what the governor says. So we're responding to a document that we only know through innuendo and discussion.
So are you willing, and I think I see where you're coming from, is that her order goes effect on?
Friday.
Friday the?
Third.
Third.
Yeah. That's what we've been told.
We will not meet again until 7th? Is that right? July 7th?
Yeah.
So, and from the 3rd until the 7th, if her order is not, does not come down, in Reno County, masks will be mandatory until we meet again. Is that what you're saying?
No, what I'm saying is, we're an advisory board, he makes a decision, they review the governor's order, they get back to us on his recommendation, we advise him, we do not only be together, we're an advisory board, and then the health officer makes the call he wants to call. And so I don't think we all need to be in the same room as an advisory board, and, there you go.
I see where you're coming from.
I feel like I'm being asked to sign a contract to have it read.
And Joe wants to write the contract, I understand that.
Well, we have an order in place now that pretty well covers, doesn't cover the mandated, but we don't, regardless, it could be a governor's, it could be the federal government's order. It doesn't make any difference what their order says, it's what we want to do, what we want to recommend to our health officer.
Right.
And so, you know, regardless of whether it's July 3rd, July 5th, or whatever it is, if we can make a recommendation to our health officer that says essentially what Commissioner Sellers said, regardless of whatever happens anywhere else, that's our responsibility to advise him as to this status.
Right.
So if we can just, is that sufficient enough?
I'm with where you guys are coming from, but then is our expectation that he will produce a document with his final statement for Reno County prior to the?
Just prior to us getting together next Tuesday, but he'll still get our advice on what the governor actually wrote, and.
He can write that article at that time, he can write the.
If I could, if I may interject, commissioners. So, just in consulting with Joe, and I'd also like to refer back to House Bill 2016, but maybe don't put a period at the end of the sentence on this one, but my understanding of House Bill 2016 is, the appointed health officer of the county still installs the initial health order. Per House Bill 2016, the commission then has. Per House Bill 2016, the commission then has the ability to either amend, change, or retract any health order that is installed by the health officer. Again, we wanna make sure that I'm not misquoting the House Bill 2016. Or Paul, if you're familiar with the language.
So kidding, I think you said it correctly.
Like a health officer installs a health order, but the board now has the ability to meet and amend, amend, rectify, and/or retract, maybe not, rectify isn't the word I wanted, but. But anyway, so the initial installation of a health order is still, lays at the feet of the health officer. And perhaps, I mean, I hear, I hear clear guidance. So I being the health officer in consultation with council can install a health order on Thursday, post-executive order, ensuring that we have everything in line. And then if there's disagreements or anything that the board wishes to discuss, amend, et cetera, it can be done on Tuesday, July 7th.
Sounds good.
We could have, you probably want to extend your health order anyway. So we could have that in place easily by Friday and as you said, if it's not sufficient, then they can
Right.
Probably give us guidance before Tuesday morning.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I think that that's a good plan and I agree with that plan. My only comment is that in my opinion, the citizens of Reno County should do all they can to help our health officer keep the numbers of the virus in Reno County down. And I think that that can be helped by wearing masks where it's appropriate.
Agree.
Thank you. Bob, anything?
The only thing I would just say is I would appreciate it if when the governor's order is released, you can make sure I get a copy right away. And with whatever you're writing up, I'd appreciate if I get a copy right away and I will send you my advice right away. I will copy.
Will do.
The county counselor, Mr. Joe Sullivan, we'll get him working again.
Okay, we're done. Thank you. We're moving on to.
Yes, I am. I am done, by the way. Go ahead.
Okay. The chairman's job is to keep the meeting moving and after the meeting you'll say, why did you take so long, Mr. Sellers?
He knows me.
The items eight, Reno County Capital Improvement Plan. And we'll listen to our county administrator on this and I believe is, please ask us what your request is today.
Okay, commissioners, thank you. In the packet or in email, I sent you the 2021 through 2025 Capital Improvement Plan. And a few years ago, the county, Reno County adopted a resolution that set the capital improvements fund and establish a process whereby July 1st, that a five-year plan is presented to you for consideration. The 2021 through 2025 plan that is before you has, for 2021, all of those numbers, the requests by department and fund match what is in each department's requested budget that we went over Thursday and Friday last week. So there's no changes from this document from what you've seen for 2021. What this plan shows is 2022 through 25, the additional amounts. Kind of as a quick overview, the amount shown here is 6.6 million in 2021 amounts. It looks like it's a large difference between 2020 and 2021. That's not actually the case. There are some numbers in the 2020 on this sheet that are missing because they are in the budgets, but they're not in capital expenditure line items. An example is 2.36 million in road and bridge fund for asphalt and bridge materials comes out of the commodities line item. But I put it for 2021 and years out because it is for capital type projects. I put it in here just so you understand that there's still a large portion that's out of commodities that is capital work. There's some other increases would be for aging, public transportation. It shows a large increase. That is a bus, van that is grant funded, but we have to pay before we get the money back. So that's, that's what's shown in there. And solid waste has some large equipment purchases coming up that were not in this year's budget. But they are a non-property tax fund. They're an enterprise fund. So that's a real quick overview. I can go into each department if you wanna talk about various items, but that, we kind of already talked about them in the budget workshop. What my request here today is for you to take, or that you receive this, any thoughts, any direction that you have on cuts or changes, things that you would like to see amended before you get the state budget form and the budget recommendation, which will be probably mid-July. Or if you have any questions on the capital items.
Well, I'm pleased that you're trying to be as transparent as possible with putting all those expenditures, even though some of them are reimbursed and some of them aren't county expenses and some of them are UCG items. But I think it's good to list it the way you have for the future. I guess I have no problem with what's presented here. I guess the only caveat I would say is that just as we look future at the 2021 budget, there might be some commissioner that might say to decrease taxes or something like that. We might look at one of these numbers. Is that acceptable to you?
Yes. I mean, there are items in here that probably could be deferred. Vehicles is obviously an easy one. There's a little over $300,000 worth of vehicles in this plan. That would be an easy, I guess, low-hanging fruit, so to speak, of budget cuts if you needed. It does, we will still have to replace vehicles in the future. It'd just be a one-year deferment of them, but.
Okay, so why are you wanting us to approve this 2021 item when it's really part of the 2021 budget?
This was really for a recommendation and for you to see this and any guidance. I wasn't requesting a formal motion to approve the document or the plan. I just wanted it to be in front of you and to see if you had any feedback as I go into more detailed number crunching of the budget.
I think one thing we did talk about, was it Friday, with the sheriff's office? And that was in discussions with regarding vehicles and how we were gonna work vehicles a little bit, whether it was gonna be none or whether we retain half or some percentage to making a smaller effect upon the next year's budget, 2022's budget. Or that, and that was the only one I really had. We talked about that, so you can handle that.
How much, you said that there's a potential savings here in vehicle deferment of $300,000.
Right.
I just, I'm not holding you to that number, okay? What would the 3% raise for employees cost?
It's a little over $400,000.
A little over $400,000, okay.
Okay, if, are there other questions? I think if not, we'll just accept your presentation and we're not accepting this CIP at this point in time.
Not approving it.
Not approving it.
Okay.
Because I think as Commissioner Hirst has said, there needs to be some more discussion on vehicles for next year.
Okay, and I'll have those earmarked in the budget.
Well, salaries aren't in the CIP.
No, not capital improvements.
But he'll move money around and make it work. I have faith.
That can be done.
Okay, do you wanna explain what you mean by salary?
Basically, maybe.
Because you weren't here Friday to discuss that.
Actually, but I was on the phone.
Thursday?
No. Well, yeah, Thursday, but I was there for the, yeah, and on Friday too.
No, you weren't on the phone Friday.
Okay, well, I was there for the discussion about the 3% raise. And that might have been in your commission comments where you made the comment that you had friends that were not having great years because of COVID and that your opinion was that people weren't handing out raises.
Yeah, yes.
So I remember that very clearly. Okay. I mean, we can discuss it now. We can discuss it next week. We can discuss it after Randy comes up with some numbers as to how we can make it work if we choose to.
Well, I think I'd like to discuss it when we have the full budget in front of us as an agenda item.
I would feel more comfortable with that as well, knowing what the impact would be.
But certainly at this point in time, I encourage both of you to privately just visit with the county administrator on your ideas and to get numbers that your ideas might be a plus or a negative to the budget so that when we have that discussion, we'll know concrete numbers instead of guesstimates to where we're headed.
I should be back in town and available for a little while to meet with Randy and do that.
Good.
I think that's, I think we need to meet and discuss different areas that we have concerns with or thoughts on. Not necessarily concerns, but just thoughts on.
Right.
Okay, county administrator, item C is yours also to present a resolution for COVID money.
Okay, hi.
It's right here.
I'm, this is a new agenda item. I'm having a little trouble till I read it through.
Well, but I think it's being presented because it has to be signed by a certain date.
Right. I think we'd have, the commission would have another week to do this. This is a template that the state of Kansas sent to all counties in Kansas. That's a required resolution to be adopted by the county commission to receive the CARES Act money that the Spark Committee had allocated, which is for Reno County is 12, 12,622,084 dollars. It's a very short timeframe. Joe, myself, has looked through this resolution. Joe made a couple of changes to it just on wording, but this is what is, a resolution that is required for Reno County to receive the 12.6 million dollars. It could be done today or at the next meeting, but I believe it would be the next meeting would be the closest to the deadline. I think it's by the July 13th is, I think, the deadline to have this adopted and sent back to the state of Kansas.
So Ron, would you be more comfortable having time to read the?
I really would be.
Okay. If we have time, I would say, yeah, that's, that's okay. So our discussion today is that we're going to postpone item 8C till next week's agenda.
Is that an action item we have to vote on or not?
I think we need to vote on that.
So moved as reported by the chairman.
Now, what's the motion?
The motion is to postpone action on a resolution until next Tuesday.
Second.
Motion is second. If there's no discussion, please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Moving on to the county administrator report, I believe Randy, you have a couple of items today.
Yes, I do. Regarding the CARES Act money with the resolution, I just wanted to let you know that this will be a very quick process. All of the expenditures and plans for expenditures basically need to be to the state of Kansas by August 15th. So have about six weeks to spend or plan to spend 12.6 million. This is to be shared with local entities, meaning the cities in Reno County, Reno County and public education, which listening to the webinar would include community, college, and school districts in Reno County. The plan will be quick. My recommendation would be to create a task force to work with this. And I would request that you okay me to start in consultation with Joe, working with some consultants or finding consultants a contract and bring that back to you for formal approval, but to reach out and talk to consultants to assist with this work because this will be very cumbersome work in a very short amount of time. It can be done internally, but the cost for consultants will be covered with this grant money. And I think that'll be more effective and will be more efficient doing that.
After hearing the complications involved in this money and the obligations that could occur to the county.
Which are?
Unfunded if, if they're, the way I understand it, and I've got it, we're finding more about it, but if we approve spending some money to someone, it goes to the state and if it's refused, then we are personally liable for that money that we gave away. And so then the only way to collect that would be, if it's not voluntary, would be to create a lawsuit.
So giving the money and then the state gets a report as to how the money was spent?
And their qualifications.
And then if they decide later in hindsight that the money wasn't spent per their rules correctly, then we as the county are responsible on getting the money from, back from them. And if they choose not to give it to us, then we have to sue them.
That's the early thing that I understand.
Yeah, and to clarify it a little more.
That scares me too. I think we do need contractors that can delve into every little detail.
That's where I was getting around, gritting around to make that motion.
It sounds like money swell. Well, when you said you wanted to hire a consultant, I knew that there was something going on because you hate consultants.
You're right.
Well, you hate paying for consultants. You like consultants, you hate paying for them.
And that's why I was gonna make that motion that we appoint Randy to, to, what he said, basically to have Randy look into the contract for representing us and to create the task force.
Right.
Correct. And do you feel like you can have that ready for action next week?
Yes, I do.
Okay, I think we have to because you got six weeks now and you got five weeks after next week, so.
And for clarification on the liability, we do have a huge liability with the spending of the money. But the way that it would work for money that has not been spent, we put together a plan. This is where the task force would also help with. Whether it's the city of Hutchinson, city of Bueller, if they have a plan that, that comes to Reno County, gets approved at the county level, it then gets submitted to the state of Kansas, the Spark Task Force. They can then approve it or not approve it. If they approve it, the money's then spent. We'll already have the money in house because they do a transfer of all the money. We'll be holding the money to begin with. The money gets spent, the federal government is the entity that then can audit it even further. The state of Kansas has already said it's okay, but if the federal government comes in and says it's not okay, we are responsible and liable to get that money back, whether it's from the other municipalities or ourselves.
Do we get a collective interest on that money? Is it an escrow, specific escrow?
I don't think it's gonna bring much money.
But it's money.
Hey, Randy, do you have other items?
Yes, I do. I wanted to mention that the CDBGCV grant that Reno County has, as of this morning, we had eight applications, so we are getting more. Some of them are in the city of Hutchinson, so those probably would not qualify. But we had talked a couple, about a month ago about a task for, a committee on that, on that, for that monies. And I haven't reached out to anyone. I didn't, there were still some in maybe the unincorporated areas that we still wanted some names, so if you wanna create that task force or send me names and I can put that selection committee together.
I think I gave you one already.
I can give you a couple.
Okay, and I'll, you just email those to me and I'll put that together. The deadline for applications is Thursday at 5:00 PM. So we'll be looking at those next week and then probably the week after start preparing to send the money or make recommendations to the county commission.
What happens if we don't have applications for the full amount? Or do we already have enough applications for the full amount?
I haven't looked. If the maximum is $10,000 or $20,000, we may have enough, but we can extend the deadline.
That's $132,000, right?
Total is $132,000. I believe $120,000 is what we have for grants. The others are administration fees.
Oh, okay.
That we're paying for.
Okay, I didn't know that part. Okay.
Do you want a county commissioner on that committee, Randy?
That would be good.
And I guess we were talking about Ron since it's rural business. Okay, so you're willing to be on that committee?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, other things?
That's all I have.
Okay, now we go to county commission reports or comments. Go first to Commissioner Bush.
I would make two comments, both of them of a personal nature. As you can tell, I'm wearing an eye patch today, and it's not because I like pirates. I'm having problems with double vision. And so I'm getting medical treatment, I have a plan. But until then, I basically wear the eye patch on one eye for X number of hours and then wear it on the other eye for other number of hours. And hopefully with some procedures, it'll be resolved. If you want to follow this stuff, some people do. I have, there's a website called Carrying Bridge. I think it's carryingbridge.com. And if you just go to that and you type in Bob Bush, it's a place where I put in my medical history. And it all goes all the way back to 2015 with my original cancer. But the reason why I always bring it up and strongly encourage that is because, you know, I mean, it's like that old game in high school. I tell Joe about my double vision. And then Joe tells somebody about it, and it's triple vision, I don't know. And then he tells somebody about it, and then she talks about how, you know, my, I don't know. My brain's full of soup, you know? Stuff gets made up. At least this way, I tell you exactly in my own words what's going on. And so if you hear something in the community, which, again, I was on county commission. I just left county commission when this happened. So there was a fair amount of discussion of people coming up to me with really bad information about what they heard about me. And so this is a way to hear to my own words. And so, again, it's Carrying Bridge. And you just click on that and it goes to Bob Bush. And you can read my own words and thoughts, and you can have replies and comments. So that's the eye patch thing. The other thing, which I thought was really interesting was, part of my treatment, was to get a COVID-19 test. And I will just tell you that, and I've been through a lot of medical procedures, and some of them are really painful and some aren't. This wasn't a big deal. I mean, and maybe it's the person giving the test. But I mean, they, you know, they put it up my nose and they tickled it around back there. And they pulled it out and they swabbed it up and sent it off to whoever. And this is KU Med. I mean, this is the varsity. But I'm just telling you, it was not that big a deal. And if people are doing the test correctly, which I'm sure KU Med is, if it's done correctly by a professional, you should go and get it done if you have the opportunity. That's all I will say. And my test came back negative, by the way.
Good.
So that's all I have.
Okay, I have two quick things. I'll try to make them very quick. First of all, Bob, thank you for sharing with us your current medical and offering to allow the public to see what you're going through and all. And we all care about you and we're all thinking about you continuously through this process. So we hope for very, very best. And we need you at every meeting that you can be at, helping us, please. The second thing, and I've already said this, the county commission will not make masks mandatory in Reno County or suggest to the health director that it not be mandatory. I personally feel that each citizen of Reno County has an obligation to every other citizen in this Reno, in Reno County to keep the cases as low as possible. And if that means wearing a mask in a few situations that might prefer not to, I believe that that's the obligation of a citizen that wants to be in a community. And I hope that most of our citizens want to be in a community that takes care of each other. With that, I'll quit.
I would also encourage the people distancing. I don't like the word social distancing because we can socialize lots of ways. So I call it people distancing. And that's really all I have, except I would move that the county commission recess into executive session for the purpose of discussing matters related to non-elected personnel for a period of 20 minutes, following which this commission will reconvene and proceed to adjourn for the day without any formal decision on the matters discussed. I request that the county administrator and county councillor join the commission and remain in attendance during the executive session, starting at 11:20.
That's a motion. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.